Oh, yes ma'am, I'm still here. Yeah, as the old folks say.
Good morning, we are going to start our work session. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Sankey to lead us in prayer.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see you all again, let us pray. Father, we are reminded as the seasons begin to change that you are God that never changes. You're the same yesterday, today, and forever, and for that, we are grateful. And as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, Lord God, we ask that you would cause us to be more mindful and more compassionate and more concerned about others more than we're concerned about ourselves. It's kind of strange how we really take upon a new attitude during this time of the year, but we ask that you would just cause us to have compassion and care in our hearts all year long. We thank you now for another opportunity to be here, to sit up here, to conduct the business of county government. And we pray that all folks that live in this county would begin to appreciate the function and the purpose of county government and get involved. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We'll start with going over our attendees for today. First, we'll hear from City County EMA, Kristy Thornton. Director Tim Anderson with Helping Montgomery Families Initiative. Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson. Senior IT Manager Rodney Smith. Chief Administrator Michael Burdell from the DA's office. President Anna Buckaloo from the Montgomery Area Chamber of Commerce. Ginny Ives is here to speak on behalf of Bridge Builders. And Executive Director Martin McCaffery with the Capri Theater. Kristy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we're happy to report, we're actually starting to see a decline. We're down thirty-one percent over the state as far as our hospitalizations due to COVID. Right now, fifty-four out of one hundred and thirty-two of our events in the Montgomery Prable area are in use, so that's super that we have over just one-third of our events in use being reported as of Friday. As of today, we have thirty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-one total cases over the entire totality of time. And we've started to see that decrease in the actual numbers that we're getting week to week. We are up to seven hundred and fifty-three of our population has died. We are now happy to report, we're also in the moderate level, so there are four levels of COVID cases. So, you see high, substantial, moderate, and low. And we see we're on the good path to getting down to where we were wanting to be. We do have two vaccine clinics over the next two weeks. We'll be at the Montgomery County Courthouse this Thursday doing Pfizer vaccines. And it's first dose, second dose, booster, what have you. We're really hoping we get the word from the CDC today or tomorrow that we'll be able to do those vaccinations from all the way down to five-year-olds. So, hopefully that'll help expand some of the people that we're getting calls about. I'm sure y'all have gotten some, I know the mayor's offices as well as the EMA as far as when can we get some of our children vaccinated? So, those are options that are coming open. We're just waiting on the final approval from the CDC. I did forward you each an email from the Alabama State EMA Director Brian Hastings where it shows that we see those numbers are starting to decline, especially in our hospitalizations. Thank you so much.
Kristy.
Yes, sir.
Now, you said the booster, is it available to anybody or you have to sixty-five and above?
The booster's available to anyone. It's sixteen and older on the booster.
But I know it's like sixty-five and above earlier or something.
Yes, sir, they did just like they did when the vaccines first started rolling out. They took care of the most vulnerable populations. And so many people work in our factories, school systems, and things like that. We're just trying to take care of everyone. We have plenty of vaccine and we're not going to hold it ransom for.
So, that is recommended, you take the booster?
They have recommended it, yes, sir. So, we're just making it available and as accessible as possible, by no means are we trying to push it on anyone. We just try to make it as accessible to those that do still want it.
Mr. Chairman, in light of this positive report, and we've had fairly consistent positive news of late, I think that is attributable to the fact that a combination of vaccinations and natural immunity. Additionally, the state of Alabama has, their health order has expired as of October thirty-first. I would like the county commission to consider making the county campuses mask optional effective today.
Any discussion? Any discussion?
I don't have anything on that. I'm going to continue to wear mine, mine, but I don't know, I think we need to, the numbers are going down. I suppose we are developing natural immunity, some of us. Not sure just how much we're able to talk about that in an intelligent fashion. However, I think we ought to just see what the state Health Officer Dr. Harris has to say about not wearing masks, period. But I'm going to continue to wear mine. I would encourage others to continue to wear theirs until we really, really get to a place where we can say that we're okay.
Mr. Sankey?
I think I would follow Commissioner Walker's lead and make it maybe highly recommended but not required.
So, we're saying optional. Saying optional.
Right, optional, and you know, a lot of businesses have placed on their doors masks, highly recommended, but they're not required. And I would, I would ask that of the county campuses, the buildings, the probate offices, and for our employees.
Is it appropriate to vote on that now or do you have to, with the attorney?
No, you can vote on that, man, it's y'all's decision. You control the county.
Often, often times, we don't prepare to put on the agenda, we have to weigh rules on a new item.
Yeah, well, it'd be safer to weigh your brothers. But y'all, y'all the ones that enforce it, so certainly you got to be the decision makers as to how it's enforced or not enforced.
You know, I've been, go ahead, go ahead.
As I said, you've been discussed with the, with the Chief Judge, County Courthouse personnel.
No, I don't, I don't think so.
I think the vote is pretty much sure.
I would think that the judges can certainly make their own decision for what they do in the courthouse if they want to do something different than what the county commission recommends. They've been doing that for the past year and a half.
Yeah, you're right. The presiding circuit judge will can meet with the judges, they make that decision.
Well, I'm in favor of it being optional because I've been following it, I mean, for the last two months when we put it back on. And I have seen some, a lot of the clients, and I'm like Mr. Sankey, I'm going to continue to wear mine. But when we say optional, we always give the people an option whether they want to wear it or not, so.
It'd be optional whether or not I invite anybody in my office without one.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's your option.
It seems like it would be a bit inconsistency even though we claim that the courthouse is doing whatever they want to do. If I came over here to conduct business and didn't have a mask on and ran to the courthouse and they said, well, you got to put one on, then you know, I'm just thinking about the citizen and.
The thing is that we don't follow the judge, the judges follow the commission rule. We own the bills and things, that's what I think that's the point I'm trying to make is that it ought to be some consistency.
I think that is the rule. I don't, I don't, I never understood that if we declared something for courthouses, that the judges could opt out of it if they wanted to. That was never my understanding. What these building, we manage these buildings. We're responsible for what happens in them. And if we say wear masks in a courthouse, they'll wear masks. If we say they're optional, they're optional. I don't see how the, the circuit judge could overrule us.
I think at some point.
His courtroom maybe, but not the building.
I was going to say, I think each judge over the past year and a half has had rules to follow in that judge's courtroom only.
Yeah, but that building, that building is our responsibility.
Yeah, the building is, and the county employees, they are. But the judge has the dominion over his courthouse, her courthouse.
His courtroom.
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 Courtroom, I'm sorry, I meant courtroom. For what it's worth, the federal courthouse is optional now as of October the twenty-ninth. Well, we don't, we can't decide. No, I'm just saying that's for what it's worth.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we need to formalize this decision, I'm not getting clear advice from the attorney. We need to formalize this decision during our session and our vote. Do we need to do it?
Yeah, you have to do it during the form.
So, we would need to put this as a waived rule item and, and take it up during the formal session is my request, Mr. Chairman.
The items we'll consider on the agenda in the formal session. Consider agreements for housing juveniles at the Montgomery County Youth Facility for Otaga, Butler, Chilton, and Elmore Counties. Consider an agreement with the Alabama Department of Public Health for replacement of the Health Department Facility roof. Consider an agreement with the Alabama Department of Public Health for improvements at the Health Department Facility. Consider proposed twenty-twenty-two legislative agenda item relating to Montgomery County to authorize the sheriff to conduct fundraising events to provide for the use of proceeds and to provide that this act is remedial, cure, and curative. Consider recognizing and denying a claim regarding Ms. Spadell. Consider an increase in the daily compensation, compensation to eighty dollars per day for the Board of Registars, Registars.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On that particular agenda item, I just want to make sure that we're clear on what it is that we're doing. I understand based upon my conversation with Cheryl that the state already pays them eighty dollars per diem and they want the county to pay them eighty dollars per diem, more or less doubling what they currently get. Is Cheryl here?
Missy is right there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cheryl, can she speak to that, please?
You're not actually doubling it, you're meeting it. We currently pay thirty-five dollars a day. That's what the county currently pays for a total of one hundred and fifteen. So, they're asking for the county to pay the same as the state for one hundred and sixty a day, so to match, just to match the state contribution.
And it is true that they kind of come, they come and go as they please, right? Nobody kind of monitors, you know, whether they are there or not. They just, they want a hundred and whatever, one hundred and sixty dollars per day, per diem total. But nobody monitors whether they come and go or, or if they are actually in the office every day.
Well, their position is not an hourly position, so it's not an eight to five. I don't really, can't speak to all those specifics, but it can.
And it's per day that they work.
Hmm, yes.
It's per day that they work.
It's per day that they work.
Oh, is that right? They.
Yeah, I mean, every day.
They have to sign in to get that money.
I don't think so. They have to actually do a time sheet, not a time sheet hour by hour, but a day that they come to work is submitted to the state to get reimbursed.
Okay.
Any other question?
Thanks, Cheryl.
Consider a bond issued to fund repairs and renovations to the detention facility and other capital projects. Consider.
Let's see, one, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I just have a number of questions this morning. In terms of the bond issue, do we need to be more specific about what it is that we're actually voting on today? I mean, the dollar amount, how the money is going to be used? I was just a little concerned about that, it seems so vague. So, can you help me understand what it is that we're actually voting on that relates to the bond issue? There's no dollar amount listed. There, we're not specific about what we're going to be spending the money on. And so, it seems now that what we're saying is that we can just go and ask for, you know, whatever amount someone might decide to ask for and then come back and decide how we're going to spend it.
Cheryl, you want to speak to that?
I think Commissioner Sankey, what, we didn't put a specific number on there. The parameters are in the range of thirty million, we know that. We're not going to go that far from that because we know about what that debt service is and that's kind of what we've determined we can handle. The reason you don't put an exact amount on that is a lot of times when you go to the bond market, I'm not a bond expert. The bond market, that, that amount might fluctuate a little bit depending on the discount, the premium, and what your net is. That's why there's no definite amount on there.
Did you say it won't exceed, did you have a dollar amount you say it won't exceed?
Well, we're looking at around thirty million. It might be a little higher, you have to borrow to net, you know, to those funds. But that's the number we've talked about as far as how much debt service we were willing to add.
Okay, so.
Which is about, I believe is around a million a year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is that I don't recall ever being in a discussion to determine, oh, just why did we need this? Did we really need it and what we want to spend it on specifically? In the past, when we've done these type things, what we've done is we've decided that there was something that needed to be done. We looked into that, made sure we knew what that number was and what we were going to be able to do. And we came up with a figure and then we decided to go to the bond market. But the first I heard of this, somebody was here telling us where, to sign something, okay, to move forward. I just don't think that enough thought has gone into this. I'm the last person up here to tell you that we don't need a well-maintained, fully functional jail facility. We do. But we have a capacity for more than one thousand inmates up there. We've never had, since I've been on this commission, more than seven hundred inmates in there at a time. And currently, it's around six hundred and twenty-eight. We have too much space. Now, we can, we, if we, if we continue to maintain twelve, thirteen-hundred capacity and continue to keep six hundred average there, we're maintaining space. We're paying money, we're throwing away good money. There are other law enforcement areas that that money could be spent in. That's just something that we would have talked about had we really fully discussed this before going to the market. I don't believe in borrowing money just because we can. And I'm with Mr. Sankey, it's not clear what we're going to do with it. We don't even know how much we're going, we need because we haven't thought it through. We haven't discussed it as we usually do. So, I'm definitely a no vote on this, but obviously you got the majority here, but I'm a no. Because we, this is, this procedure was nothing like what I'm used to when we come to a decision to, to put this county in debt to the two hundred and thirty million dollars.
Commissioner Harris, with, with, truly with all due respect, I was in a meeting with you on October sixth, which was almost a month ago, that we discussed this, this issue about the jail and, and the needs and, and how we would proceed. I trust that you have spoken to the sheriff or the administration or your fellow commissioners since October sixth to get any information and any questions answered that you might have.
I was on the phone, if you could call the last meeting, and I, I listened to the sheriff, what he had to say. I didn't disagree with a whole lot of what he had to say because he wants a fully operational jail. But you don't need the capacity that we have, and there are other ways of dealing with that, and we should deal with it now. Because if we fix it and spend the money to fix what we have up there now, even though we're not using it, it's going to rust out, it's going to have to be maintained. And we're going to continue to throw away money on space we're not using. And we haven't thought that through. So, I don't know what, October sixth, we might have had a meeting, I don't know, but I'm telling you, the process that got us here, where we are right now, getting ready to vote on this, we, was, is not the usual process for determining how to put this county in debt.
I don't have any, any issue at all with your argument against borrowing money for this project. What I take issue with is the implication that our process has been irregular. Again, we were in a meeting on October sixth here at the county. It was, it was me and you and Florence and Cheryl and Kendall, and we discussed this issue. But prior to that, I know that I had, you know, people had spoken to me about it for a month prior to that even. So, I feel it's fine to disagree with doing this, but to, to cast a shadow of doubt, saying that we've done this in an irregular fashion is, is not accurate.
Well, let's, let's, let's be clear. I remember the meeting now. That meeting was a preliminary meeting. We, what we talked about and that was, was to go away, go away and gather some additional information.
Correct.
And meet again. But we didn't meet again, the next thing I know, it's on the agenda. And I asked about that, how did that happen? You know, we, I'm, I'm set to meet again. We, we, there were specific questions that I had. Somebody had to go to the sheriff, get specific information and come back. The next thing I know, it's on the agenda. So, you can mischaracterize that meeting if you want to, but I can tell you what, what, what happened in that meeting. I was expecting another meeting, we never had it. The next thing, it was on the agenda, and I wasn't done considering the information that I had requested.
But we were given data as a follow-up to that meeting. That, I mean, that answered my questions. I understand that it didn't answer yours, but it, it satisfied my questions.
Anybody else?
Well, you know, one thing, I think our last bill, water bill last month was what, fifty thousand? Sheriff, in the jail, fifty thousand on water bill? So, if you, if you just take that twelve more months from now, that's only six hundred thousand. We've got a one million dollar debt that we're going to have on this bond issue, that's six hundred thousand of them. That's not counting any repairs we're trying to do to stop those leaks or we're trying to replace copper, not including the lighting, the money that we're going to save on the lighting. So, the one million that we're investing per year is more of an investment than it's just to continue to try to pipe, patch up these pipes. So, it's something that I'm in favor of doing. I've done the research, I've been very involved in it and gone through the numbers that the architects have proposed, and I'm comfortable with those numbers at this time.
I don't, I don't think anybody's disagreeing.
That's not even the issue, Doug, you're missing the issue.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing that we need to fix the plumbing. But when Doug talked about the money that's being wasted due to leaky pipes and inefficient lighting, I'm, I'm hoping if we move down the road and get these things erected that we'll be able to do a cost-saving analysis, you know, because I don't have any numbers to, you looked at the water bill, I'll take your word for it. I guess you've looked at the electric bill, I'll take your word for that. And hopefully, we can, if we move forward and repair these things that you say are wasting money, and I agree that you don't want any leaky pipes, then hopefully, we can see the cost savings at some point on paper, not just what people say, you know, has happened.
That misses the point. Nobody's talking about not fixing a leaky pipe. We're talking about what if I wanted leaks the next time? You got the same fifty thousand dollar bill from a pipe that's leaking that you didn't even need to begin with. The water could have been flowing through somewhere else if you had looked at it, looked at an alternative plan of bypassing all the stuff you're not using. And phasing the stuff that you're not using out and give the sheriff an operational jail with facilities that he's going to use with a capacity that he's going, that's, that's, that's appropriate for Montgomery County. That's what I'm talking about. That's the kind of thinking and the kind of considerations I'm talking about. Nobody's talking about leaving a pipe leaking to pay fifty thousand. Everybody, I want the jail to be in top-notch shape. I don't want any leaky pipes. But if it leaks again, you got the same fifty thousand dollar bill on the same pipe that you don't really need.
Sheriff.
It's, 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 that's my argument. I mean, I, I, I think, might not be clear to this panel, but I'm sure it's clear to people listening. You know, so I'm no.
Sheriff, Mr. Chairman, may I ask the sheriff to please address the commission again with regard to the needs in the jail, the capacity needs in the jail, the need for us to go to the bond market and make these overwhelming repairs?
Good morning. To those I hadn't spoke to, yeah, I think the last time we, we talked, we talked about the problem. the problems that we were having and we talked about the capacity issue and we talked about the, the problems that, as far as the water leaking and things of this nature. I know Florence and him and have been working with the architects that went in and looked at where the problems were at. It's not because of that, you're talking about a building that was built in nineteen eighty-six that we opened and we'd never had problems. But now we're at the point of where the copper pipes are collapsing, the drains are collapsing, and that's just from years of wear and tear. And right now, it's not just our jail, it's every jail, they're going in and replacing the copper pipes, putting in pegs, which is something that will stand up and you don't have to worry about the continuous leaks.
Sheriff, thank you so much and the degradation of the facility, I think, is something that we all appreciate. Speak to us specifically with regard to the need for this full capacity, both jails fully functioning, may, help make sure that we're clear.
Yeah.
Sell that to us, you know, let us, let us know that that is actually what you need.
It's the same thing that I told you all before, you know, I hate when somebody say we got two jails, we don't. We got one jail, two buildings. The problem is all your necessities are in the old jail, your kitchen, your laundry, your court holding, all of that is in jail one. That's how we bring inmates to and from court, it's through jail one. That's where we cook all the food at, is in jail one. Our other two floors above that is holding cells. So what you got is the, the first two floors are your necessities. That's where all your, 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 your water's being used because that's where all your laundry room at, that's where all your, your boilers, that's where everything that runs that jail and the courthouse. Don't just get caught up on saying this is jail repair, that same, some of those same boilers and HVACs control the courthouse as well. So we're not just replacing that for just the jail, we're replacing that for the courthouse as well. You all remember it this summer when the system went down, it wasn't just at the jail, it was at the courthouse as well. So what we're repairing here now will be not just for that one building because those two buildings are connected. So if you all met with an architect and want to meet with the architects about how you want to phase it and stuff, I have no problem with that. Only thing I'm looking at is the, all my, the necessities to run that jail is in that one building.
Okay. What's next?
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies, does anyone have anything to add?
Hey, who's got my phone? Am I going to get my phone back soon? Somebody came and took my, yeah, yeah. You can bring it back to me. I look stuff up, you know, emails and stuff that I need, sorry to call you out, thank you, I appreciate it.
Did you do what you needed to do?
Mr. Singleton and Sankey.
Oh dear.
Mr. Greg, he sent you off a letter for that annual Thanksgiving deal over in McIntyre. He's going to give him two thousand. I'm giving two thousand out of my agency to, for recreation.
I've always supported him, I don't know what amount, I've supported him in the past. Sounds like a thousand was probably right. How much, how much did you give him last year?
Two thousand.
You gave him two thousand last year? All right, Florence, if you would, add a thousand from my donated revenue.
I have a number of dinners and other activities planned, Mr. Chairman, so I'm going to pass on that one.
Okay, and what's the name of the church? Rhoda Parks Church, damn, what's the name of that church?
Saint Paul AME.
Uh, they'll ask for seventy-five hundred dollars, so if nobody going to join me.
I'll split that with you.
Okay.
And from which fund?
From my agency.
From agency, I'll split it from agency. I don't think I, got a separate request.
What, what are they doing, Mr. Chairman, Saint Paul?
Celebration, well, celebration.
Oh, okay.
On December.
I have a thousand dollars from agency, I believe I have something there.
You got some new money.
Where, where it came from?
Plenty of money.
Oh, that's gone, man.
Hundred and twelve.
Oh, that right there, that's what, that's what.
So, I'm sorry, is that, you want to take a thousand dollars from your agency to Saint Paul also?
Yes, please.
All right. Any additions to education? And then finally, miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I got a call from, uh, Dr. uh, Tina, Botanical.
Tina Davis.
Dr. Davis, yes, her request really was for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I missed that.
And, uh, I want to commit five thousand from my designated.
Yeah, that was my fault, she did, I misunderstood her email, I thought she was asking for five thousand total, she was asking for five thousand from each commissioner. And I believe we granted her the five thousand from our collective funds, so now she would certainly appreciate if any commissioners, and, and thank you for reminding me of that. Florence, I'll do an additional twenty-five hundred from my agency, twenty-five hundred from agency. For the.
I would do the same. We, I would like the commission to think about redirecting some funds. Mr. Singleton gave Mercy House with the ten thousand.
Made a pledge to ten thousand.
They paid for ten thousand and doing a fundraiser. And I think that that ten thousand will come from the commission itself and I would report that it comes out of the joint infrastructure designated revenue balance.
Mr. Chairman, I also made a, made a pledge of ten thousand dollars and just take my ten thousand dollars out of my designated. If we're going to give them anything, give them ten thousand apiece. I mean, if you designate, if, if everybody pledged, whoever pledged, it's on the pledge, it's mine.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was going to pledge five thousand out of my agency.
Mr. Chairman, I want to go back to the Botanical Garden if we're done.
Okay.
I want twenty-five hundred from designated revenue for Botanical Garden.
All right, Commissioner Walker, could you repeat what you?
From, from my personal agency, five thousand for Mercy House.
Are there any other additions?
So, just to be clear, we're, we're doing it individually now instead of, as Chairman Dean had kind of mentioned, that we might pull it from the designated joint, designated money we have for Mercy House. I mean, is there any objection to doing that twenty-five thousand from the joint, from everybody combined versus doing it individually? I know Commissioner Harris is very kind to offer that, but is that on the, is that an option that we can do? We have forty-two left in that joint.
Ken would be to give them fifty thousand dollars, Doug, ten thousand dollars from each commissioner.
I agree with that.
You know, and otherwise, then just let each commissioner pledge what they're going to do. I mean, we're going to, the challenge was ten thousand dollars and they're, Todd Strange challenged elected officials and everybody. He gave the first ten grand and he challenged everybody else. And that's the challenge I responded to, and I think that's the one you responded to. So if this commission is going to either respond to it with fifty thousand dollars or we're going to do it individually, that's the way I think.
What if we did forty thousand from the joint and did twenty-five hundred each from the five commissioners, that gets the fifty thousand.
Right, fine, it's, it amounts to ten thousand dollars apiece.
I mean, I know what Mercy House does, I've seen what Mercy House does, you have too, Commissioner Harris, you agree and I think we all agree with what Ken Austin's doing there.
He go.
Yeah, I was fine with doing it individually, I'm fine with what y'all decide.
If we did thirty from the joint and did four thousand apiece from individuals, that gets us the fifties, everybody okay with that? Any objections?
Well, me and I was saying jointly instead of the individual, when we, when Mr. Austin opened that deal enough, we gave with the thirty, we paid thirty thousand and gave the ton. That's what we did, so whether it comes from individuals or comes from joint fund, it's still a kind of commission, Montgomery County commission. I just want to make sure that he gets what he, what he needs for that area. He's always doing a heck of a job. He was twenty-four-seven while we at home sleeping, he's doing it, doing that job. It shouldn't be that hard for us to decide. Last program, what we want to do.
Is everybody okay with forty and then twenty-five hundred apiece? Forty from the joint or two thousand apiece, that'll make fifty thousand.
I'm fine with it.
I'd prefer to take thirty from the joint and then let us fill the gap individually.
Okay, thirty from the joint and four thousand from each individual, is that okay?
Not, well, you can do thirty thousand or forty thousand, I'm holding. Because I, I mean, I do support him, I write him personal checks from time to time, so I'm holding on that. In terms of the individual.
All right, so if we did thirty from the, thirty from the joint and five thousand from four commissioners, are we okay with that? That gets us the fifty.
I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Harris, you okay with that?
Yeah, it's total fifty.
It's total fifty.
I mean, I want to look to my pledge.
All right.
Commissioner Harris, where, from which fund will your five come?
Just change the ten to five, designated. I designated ten.
I'm sorry. Okay. Chairman Dean?
Uh, give me, get my five from agency.
Commissioner Walker, you have five thousand from your agency.
Correct.
Same for me, Florence, five from agency.
All right. Consider budget change request number one for the county commission appropriations. Consider a job description for the county attorney. Consider position fill request for the engineering department for an administrative support specialist, a county road equipment operator one and two. Consider a position fill request for the detention facility for corrections officer corporal. Consider position fill request for the sheriff's office for an administrative support associate, a deputy sheriff trainee, another deputy sheriff trainee and a deputy sheriff sergeant. Consider a position fill request for support services for a custodial maintenance foreman. Consider position fill request for the youth facility detention for juvenile detention officer and a juvenile detention supervisor. Consider a position fill request for the juvenile court for a juvenile probation officer. That's all the items to be considered. And we will, is it correct that we'll have one waived rule item on the mask? All right, next we'll hear from Tim Anderson with Helping Montgomery Families Initiative.
Wait, what, what was that last, you said wait, waived rule item on the, on the mask?
Right.
I thought you asked the county attorney to do something on that before.
Yeah, I asked him, because we voted on it, but we couldn't vote on it when we were talking about it.
No, I just asked him for clarification of, of how we needed to, to do that and if, if we wanted it effective today, then his recommendation was we do it during formal session as a waived rule item.
Mr. Anderson?
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning, on behalf of District Attorney Darrell Bailey, bringing you greetings this morning. My role is to appeal for continued support for the Helping Montgomery Families Initiative, which is the department, of course, in the district attorney's office. We, like many other helping agencies, have been severely challenged by the pandemic, whether it be financially or ways that we would normally connect to our families. Very happy to say that we have overcome those challenges by being innovative in the way that we connect to the needs of the families in our community. Many of you are aware, of course, that we began the Open Doors Program this past December, which is designed to address traumatic symptoms in family members who witness homicides in the city. We have had over seventy-five different therapeutic sessions, mentoring connections, basic need connections for families that would otherwise be impacted emotionally, traumatically by the things that they see in our city. A number of our young people who would normally not have the services that we have now will perpetuate the very things that they see and we're glad to innovate ways to connect. We've been recognized nationally for our work in this particular area, it's been well publicized at the National District Attorneys Association in Norfolk, Virginia. And our program has now become a catalyst all over the country, almost every month now we're having conversations with district attorney's offices and other interested parties who are interested in doing the kind of work that we do. So we're very proud about being able to expand our department even in a pandemic. Finally, I would like to mention that we are now, with school being in the second quarter of the school year, seeing, we are on pace, I should say, for twice as many referrals from the city, from the community and from the school system as we've had in any year prior. And of course, we realize that the pandemic and the emotional stress that our young people are going through in school has heightened the need of our services. And so our staff remains the same in regards to the number, but we have increased our workload and hence the need for the support that we are very appreciative that you've given us in the past and we look forward to doing more work in the future. Any questions?
Yeah, am I, am I, am I to understand it? The cities, everybody else has signed off, the city has signed off, the school board has signed off?
Yes, the county is all that remains.
Okay.
Yes.
I think, I think you guys do, the work that you do is desperately needed in, in the community. I think you do a good job of, of taking care of that.
Thank you.
Business.
Thank you.
I fully support your efforts.
Mr. Anderson, how often do y'all meet where you pull in all the different agency representatives and discuss the, the referrals?
We do that every other week, we're actually scheduled again this Wednesday.
That's what I want, uh, this Wednesday, like tomorrow?
Yeah, uh, this is.
Or the tenth.
Actually, I'm sorry, Wednesday, yes.
As in tomorrow?
Yes.
But then you meet every other week, will you email me? I would like to sit in on one of those, it's been a while since I did and I was incredibly impressed when I sat in on one before and I would like to do that again.
Absolutely.
If you would email me your schedule and I'll get it on my calendar.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
I can't do it, you know, this Wednesday or next Wednesday, but beyond that, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
What you hear, and I'll send the invite to, to all of you in case you have some time to, to get involved and be a part of it, but in closing, what But in closing, what you hear, uh, is, uh, the cases from the Open Doors Program, which are, uh, dynamically different from our normal truancy issues because of the heightened needs and issues from young people, uh, who see murders and homicides in our city. And so look forward to having you with us.
Thank you so much.
Tim, I'd like, you know, I know you send a report to the Associate Superintendent of Student Services every month.
Yes.
I'd like to, is that something you could share?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I'll backdate them and send you perhaps the last few months just to.
I mean, I'd just like to see one.
Sure.
Don't do a lot of, just, I would just like to see what's all in there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You share that with all of us, give us all a copy of it.
Will do. Thank you so much.
Uh, next we'll hear from Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson with an update on the rental assistance program.
Good morning. Uh, what you have before you is an amendment, uh, to extend the contract that we currently have with Horn, uh, for them to continue in administering the emergency rental assistance program. This would be a seven month, seven month extension, excuse me. Uh, currently, the contract is set to end on April thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. This contract would take us into ERA two, spending and spending those funds without having to stop, find a new, um, company or, um, LLP to, to distribute those funds. I mean, there will be, uh, no other reason for a lag in distributing those funds. So that seven month extension would take us to December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. Um, and so there will, of course, that would be the maximum liability. Um, currently, we're still working with Horn to determine where we're going to land in terms of that increased percentage. Uh, this, what you have, the amendment states a one point seven five increase, uh, in terms of one percentage, one point seven five percent increase. And so also.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, sir.
One point seven five percent increase in what?
Um, in their fee. So it went from the contract, the current contract has eight point five percent of the total amount. Um, and this contract calls for ten point two five percent of the total amount.
Really, really? Why, why don't, why don't ever, anybody from Horn ever come here and talk to us?
Well, we can arrange that for the next meeting, sir. This is something that we wanted to make sure we did get in front of you so you could see the information. We have contacted Horn about that percentage increase being able to be, is that negotiable? Is that, uh, being able to be negotiated, uh, further? As it relates to the numbers that we get, you know, we have a, we're able to contact Horn and they're generally pretty responsive.
You know, I'm telling you, this has been just, I mean, I've gotten calls and threats and everything else about the way this thing has been administered. And all we've really got from Horn is a bunch of excuses. You know, anybody can say that the government rigs are so this and so that, but this is why we hired you. But to, to have a, the track record that we dealing with and then to come in and ask for a raise? They got us in between a rock and a hard place because you, you're right. If we, if we were to try to change now, then we're gonna, we gotta go back, establish new relationships and do this. But this has been a really, really tough process. I, people call me, I'm about to be kicked out and I've been trying to get it for six months and this, that is, this, this, it's just awful.
I, I understand.
I mean, I couldn't do it, I couldn't come with a straight face, that's why they should come here and ask for.
We'll arrange for them to be here at the next, next meeting.
With a straight face and ask for a raise, based on what they put us through. You know, and dealing with our constituents who desperately need this help and this support. I mean, how much, how much have we spent and how much do we, do we have left? Do we have to spend?
Uh, we're around four point five million, which means we've got about, um, two point five left to spend. We're spending faster, we're, we are able to get some funds out faster. We did have a, you know, when you had one of your constituents, constituents get in contact with me, we were able to get her, her money as fast as possible. Commissioner Walker also had it.
That was great. You did, you did, you did an excellent job on that, but she, when she called me, she was going up the wall. She was, because she had already been traumatized in the process. But she praised what you did, thought, and thanked me for, uh, putting, putting her in touch with you. You did an excellent job of settling that, but that's the kind of thing, you know, that she wasn't the only one. She wasn't the first one that I had that issue with. And I, I, I don't know, I, I hope they, I hope they got it together.
Kendall, did you get any insight on my situation?
Yes, I did.
I know that's just one anecdotal, but maybe it reflects the bigger problem.
Um, if you will bear with me one moment.
Or we, we can talk about it, I don't want to hold things up. We can talk, I, I just want to make sure I understand why that happened and why we had to intervene in order, and maybe there's a legitimate reason. So let's talk about it after the meeting.
Sure, sure, but I, I just, you know, I, we can talk about it. I just really want to reiterate that this money is coming from an unprecedented situation and I don't think any agency was ever prepared to handle getting this money to get to these people and having to deal with new regulations and trying to find people to assist them with a brand new system. Um, and I, I think it is important for, for us to ask questions, uh, while, while exercising a level of, okay, we understand y'all dealing with something, but give us a little bit of help and we can give you all a little bit of help as we're trying to help out our community. Because that is important. Nobody ever wants to see anybody evicted, you know, because you can't pay your rent and you don't have a job. And, you know, this, this moratorium up on high and Congress ended. Um, so no, I, I think we'll be able to get Horn here, we'll be able to ask some questions and we'll be able to, uh, have a come to Jesus meeting, so to speak.
Cheryl, do you have anything you want to add?
I just wanted to say, uh, I mean, I, this, as Kendall has done a great job of explaining this process, I've been, you know, I deal with it every day because I'm on the financial side and I know it's a CPA firm that was hired. I'm a CPA that has dealt with clients. And I mentioned to Florence and Kendall, the reporting, just the reporting requirements on this, which kind of mirror the administration that Horn is doing. If you had hired me to actually do all the reports we have to do, which I'm in the process of doing, I would go up on my fee because it is a lot more than I could have ever anticipated as far as reporting. And I know in working with Jason, who is the main person I work with daily, and getting the reports I need, I mean, I could never come up with those reports. And I know that they've added, you know, at one time, they added five to seven more people to the process to deal with the ongoing change in the guidelines. And that's another thing, those guidelines have changed so many times since the contract. So I'm just saying, when I saw the increase in the fee, I was not surprised. And then if you go back, they were, their fee was, if not the lowest, one of the lowers. It was a flat fee on the front end, not to exceed. So I just wanted to add that information.
Ms. Tim?
Yes, sir.
Now, we, we understand that this is all new in terms of the treasury guidelines and, and having a rental assistance program. And yeah, they have done a pretty decent job, but I don't think they should be rewarded, uh, you know. And we don't necessarily have to defend them, uh, for the, I guess, the challenges that they've had, uh, in terms of managing the program. Horn has contracts all across this country, multi-million dollar operation. And so I'm sure they understood treasury guidelines. If they didn't, they should have when they first embarked upon this venture. And so while I appreciate the fact that it was a new program, they had some challenges in terms of trying to get the money out there during a timely manner, you know, I really don't think they need our sympathy, uh, as it relates to, you know, the administration of program. And I spoke with Mr. Kendall about it as well. I just don't think they really earned an increase. I mean, they earned the privilege of continuing the business with us and that's fine. And, and you know, they are approachable. I've had to call them, uh, on some of the, the constituents that called me and they were very responsive after you all had the meeting with them, um, some time ago. And so, but I still don't think that we need to, uh, come to their rescue in terms of the challenges they had because, as again, you know, they may have actually taken on more than they could handle because they have contracts all across the country, you know, a pretty large operation. So, you know, I would say they need to stay at the same fee, uh, until, you know, they can show us that they can manage ERA two a little bit better.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. So we still got two million left.
Yes, sir. We have just tried to be at, uh, about the end of, well, this month, yes, sir.
Um, next we'll hear from Senior IT Manager Rodney Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I'm presenting to you the, uh, our Microsoft Enterprise Agreement renewal. Um, it's for another three years commitment. And it's basically everything that we do here supports all of our information systems from servers, databases, email, the whole gamut. And it's something we've been doing, I think, ever since back in two thousand and six. We're just asking for that big renewal.
Yeah, we do it on the next agenda.
Yes, sir. Alright, thank you.
Next we'll hear from Michael Burdell with the DA's office.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Right now, the District Attorney's Office is structured with two investigator threes, two investigator twos, one of which is assigned to the cold case unit, and six investigator ones. Um, converting one of the investigator ones to a two slot would, uh, allow the structure to more closely align with the actual work that the investigators are, are doing for, uh, the office. It will also help with our ability to, uh, retain some of our long-tenured, uh, investigators seeking to, uh, advance in their career.
We had one about a month or two ago?
Yes, yes, sir.
That Mike came in and then changed the mind and all that or?
Um, nope, 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 that, that, uh, promotion went through.
Yeah.
And that timing is really what kind of brought this to a, a head. We had the structure for the ability to promote one investigator one, but we had more than one long-tenured investigators, um, that would be overly qualified to advance to an investigator two position.
How, how much does this move go cost?
If, um, we made it promotional as we're seeking to do, i- it would cost, uh, five thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars in terms of, uh, salary and benefits.
Okay. I don't have any problem with it.
Next agenda.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next up is Anna Bakaloo from the Chamber of Commerce to give us an update.
Good morning, I want to thank you all for an opportunity to update you and as always tell you how deeply appreciative and proud the chamber is of our partnership with the county commission. Um, I want to update you today quickly on some of the work we're doing to diversify the economy as a pillar of our foundational economic development work. To kind of recap, the major focuses in those areas this year are, uh, the positioning of Montgomery County as a leading logistics hub in the southeast. We feel we're making tremendous progress on that front. Also, our military and DOD work. We've got mission growth that we can have a total dedicated briefing on, on how our missions are doing. But then more importantly, how we're leveraging those missions to create economic growth and competitiveness for Montgomery. Our tourism work, you are a tremendous partner in our tourism work. I'm happy to say our new visitor center, we've had about five hundred people just in the month of August, September that came through. That has been a tremendous success. Our occupancy right now in our hotels is about sixty-two percent, up from about fifty percent this time last year. We're seeing our lodgings, I know Florence and Cheryl track that lodgings tax receipts very closely. Uh, I know on the city side, I think they're up about twenty-six percent year-to-date, um, calendar year-to-date, not fiscal year-to-date. And then our occupancy, the increase there, but also room demand is up over twenty percent. So we're seeing that tourism recovery and we appreciate your investment that's making that possible in Montgomery County. I really want to yield my time to an update on one of those pieces of our economic development strategy that's so important right now, innovation and entrepreneurial development. I'd like to ask Sharice Stokes.
Let me ask you one, one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, we, we, we visited, uh, EJI.
Oh, yes, sir.
As a part of was, uh, of, uh, your efforts. And, uh, one of the things that really struck me, uh, was when, uh, Brian Stevenson stated that there were a, a number of groups that actually wanted to, uh, make, uh, this, a visit to Montgomery, the center of their annual convention and this type of things. And one of the reasons, uh, uh, we don't get a lot of that is because of the number of hotel rooms. What's on the horizon, uh, for increasing, uh, the number of, uh, hotel rooms of our city?
We have the potential of about four to five hundred new rooms coming online within the next eighteen months or so. Couple of new developments down around, uh, the Tallapoosa Jefferson Street area. But also, and I can't confirm this, but hearing about possible development up on the hill, uh, at Five Points, close to the Memorial for Peace and Justice. So I think we'll see some more room and as, as the room volume comes on, that's one reason why the marketing is so important because you know that demand, you got to build the demand to meet that increasing supply. Um, and a lot of our focus right now is on social media. And I wish Ashley Jornigan could spend an hour talking to you about the work we're doing with EJI to create a, a curated experience for groups when they come here. Every corporate entity in this country, every athletic conference, every campus and university leadership should be coming to Montgomery, Alabama. It has a, has to be a must-see destination and where they come, not only to tour, but to experience what we have here in terms of the lessons learned. Uh, that's something we can offer here, no one else can offer, so we're really excited.
How many beds do we have now? How many rooms do we have now?
About six thousand hotel rooms, give or take, uh, in Montgomery County area.
Anna, we.
Yes, sir.
We really need to promote this museum. I mean, I, I was blown away.
It is incredible.
Uh, because my wife's big in the museums. I'm not, but, so I get dragged into a lot of museums, but, uh, all over the country and the world that we've been to, but this is, just blew my mind.
It's world-class.
Way how well put together it is. And on the, uh, visitor center, just a, a couple of things. I walked into the visitor center and, and I shared the story with you, but, uh, uh, I met a young lady, she did not know me and I did not know her. She did a really, really good job there. But my question is, I know we had talked about having people out with T-shirts and people with an app that you go to signs. What do we add on all that?
They're being produced, the side, there's, what's happening is there'll be trail system emanating from Court Square with sidewalk stickers and all that stuff's in production. We've, we've got some street banners up, but not the QR codes yet. So the trails will take you away from the visitors. So our folks can literally walk out onto the square and point. And you'll have a card and an app probably, or an audio file that directs you to these trails. Um, one thing we found with our ambassadors this summer when we launched and, and tried that program, people were a little uncomfortable when our folks in their T-shirts would come up to them. They, it was sort of like, why are you approaching me? Um, so we kind of have learned as we've tried this program. Uh, we, we seem like we have better luck if, one, at special events, that works great. We go and set up in a, a booth at a, a football game, a conference, that works well. We've got our bright T-shirts on. Out on the street, it's not as effective, but I tell you what we, we learned from that. Rather than having our ambassadors out trying to approach people, offer set times where we're actually going to do walking tours along those trails. So for instance, Wanda Battles, y'all, many of y'all know Wanda from King Church. Uh, she works with us part-time also. Having set times where we're actually leading people in these experiences in Montgomery so that we start getting activity at Court Square. So tourism is super important, but also super important is our strategy on innovation and entrepreneurship. And that's where I want to yield most of my time to Sharice Stokes, Executive Director of Tech MGM, and then Dr. Nicole Thompson, who is the leader and executive director of our new lab on Dexter.
Thank you, Anna. Uh, and thank you all this morning. Just want to update you on a couple of things that we've been doing from a Tech MGM standpoint. While we've been growing over the last few years, we're starting to bring online even more programs that are extending into the community. So be it our best robotics program, we will have another best robotics competition in Montgomery, sponsored and hosted with Alabama State University. We have grown that program three times over. We started with only four high schools and middle schools that were actually active in robotics. We have up to eighteen. We have up to eighteen schools that are participating this year. And even due to COVID, you had a lot of schools last year that chose not to participate. Some hubs did not make it. Our hub did make it. And we actually will almost double the amount of schools that will be in that program this year. It's great for us in Montgomery to, one, show that we have that connection to higher education as well as tech talent, but it's even greater that we're bringing that into the middle schools and we're actually taking it down a few grades to start exposing students into STEM. We also had another hackathon this year. Even though the Air Force did not come physically to do the Air Force IT Conference, it didn't stop us from having our hackathon where we had high school students as well as IT industry professionals and college students to participate in that event. And then we also graduated our first cohort of the Montgomery Tech Lab, and that's our Tech Accelerator Program. We had ten companies that came through that program. Of those companies, almost half of those companies partnered with our local colleges and universities to give internships, also to hire individuals. And one of those companies also set up shop and they're now in the lab on Dexter. They are supporting TikTok in a worldwide IT contract. Their workforce is being developed right here in Montgomery. We also had Re Systems, who now has a partnership with Alabama State University, and they sit over at MGM Works. So, our goal of not just growing small business entrepreneurs in tech, but partnering with our local colleges and universities and hiring local talent, we're doing that today. We will have our second cohort of that program that kicks off. We'll start soliciting for those companies come the November timeframe. But further than that, we've also forged a relationship with Tech Birmingham. So, Tech MGM and Tech Birmingham have formed what's called the Alabama Collective. That collective is all about having the ability to leverage regional tech talent and entrepreneurs. So, we are truly elevating minority talent as well as providing resources through accelerator programs, through activities like the lab on Dexter, as well as Innovation Depot and Bronze Valley Accelerator Program that will now elevate minority talent across Montgomery and Birmingham. So, not only have we been tremendously busy on the tech talent side, it's enabled us to open that brand-new innovation facility in Montgomery. And if you haven't been, I encourage you to stop by the lab on Dexter. That's the home for Tech MGM, the home for Montgomery Tech Lab, but it is now the home for the community to really extend what we're doing, not only from a technical side, but from an entrepreneurship side. And I'll let Dr. Nicole Thompson talk a little bit more about how we forged that relationship and how we plan to continue in the community.
Thank you and good morning. So, at the lab on Dexter, we are in our second full month of operation. We have now implemented educational programmings for entrepreneurs and for the tech community. We are also a premier coworking space at an affordable rate. Our rates are designed to be affordable for entrepreneurs that need a space to work, but they also need a space to collaborate, to incubate, and to be around like-minded business or tech talent. I advise, or I strongly suggest, if you have not had an opportunity to visit the lab, please email us, set up a time to visit this space so that you can fully experience the lab. One of the things that I also want to mention is that we have an entrepreneur education series that launches on the sixteenth where we'll be helping businesses solidify their business structure. So, whether you launched in COVID or whether you're a seasoned business owner and you need some foundational support, this is a session sponsored by BOK and Bing, and Bingham, and they will be with us throughout this educational series. So, you can visit us at thelabonDexter.com, but I also suggest and highly recommend that you come and schedule a visit and co-work with us. You can also rent a conference room with us. We have community partners that are hosting sessions within the lab. So, we want this to be a place for the people of Montgomery, whether that's tech talent or entrepreneurship.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any questions? I know we've taken a good bit of your time this morning. Any other questions? I want to thank you so much for your partnership and support. A lot of good things going on in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you.
While, um, Ginny Ives is coming down to the podium, could we consider items number four and five regarding board member appointments? Commissioner Walker has submitted the name of Paul Hutchinson to serve on the Public Building Authority. Put your, uh, his resume at your place.
Good morning and thank you all for seeing us today. Uh, we're here as a part of Bridge Builders Alabama. Bridge Builders is a diversity and leadership training program for uprising juniors and seniors in high school. I actually didn't know Nicole was going to be up here before, but I wanted to bring, uh, Dr. Thompson, Nicole Thompson here as she will be our incoming president, uh, for two thousand twenty-two. And Ellen Farmer is our executive director. I see so many people in this room that I know from Leadership Montgomery and Leadership Alabama. And to put it in a nutshell, Bridge Builders is the teenage version. It's a, it's a diversity and leadership program. It brings the, these high school juniors and seniors together, uh, for a, for a week-long conference in the summer for each group. There's approximately eighty students that come from public school, private school, parochial schools, and some home schools. And they get an opportunity to spend time together and to get to know each other and to sort of walk in the other person's shoes. But a big part of what we do also is require these students to give back to the community. They have to give community service hours. And I also have seen several people in here who have used some of our students to help promote their activities and what they need. So, it's a, it's a, a program that started approximately fifteen years ago and it's been very successful and we're real proud of our young people. But also, what's really important to them, not only do they get the diversity training and get to know people, they, they get leadership training. We've added some banking training for these young people so that they can understand that their debit card doesn't work all the time. And, and we, and we hope that their parents are thankful for that. But, um, it, it also gives them an opportunity to add this community service opportunity onto their college resumes. We meet at AUM. Some of these kids have never had an opportunity to stay in a dorm it earlier in their lives and, and so they haven't had an opportunity to be on a college campus and it's quite meaningful to them. And I had approached Commissioner Singleton about financial support and if y'all have any questions for, uh, Dr. Thompson or for Ellen, they're, they're ready to answer them and we would, would appreciate all the support that you can give us. And I don't know if you want me to be specific about that or?
Yeah, I mean, what, what your ask was?
Okay, our ask was for twenty-five thousand dollars to go into our two thousand twenty-two budget.
Um, Commissioners, I would like to add on behalf of Bridge Builders that not one student pays a fee to come to this week-long program. So, they're housed at AUM. They're students from all of the neighboring counties and within Montgomery County, but we do not charge these students to get this diversity and leadership training. It is through contributions such as the commissioner and through corporate sponsorships that we are able to provide this free program.
Ms. Chairman, I was first, first became aware of this program when I was in Leadership Montgomery and had no idea that we had, uh, an organization that was doing this, this kind of work, uh, in the city. And I, it was, it was very impressive. I think, uh, Steve, uh, I can't think of his name now, but was the, was the executive director during that time. And, and we supported you then. Didn't, didn't, didn't we support at the last meeting?
No, I brought it up that I'd made a recommendation we give them ten and then Commissioner Sankey wanted them to come in and give a report.
Ah. Yes, I, I. Well, I, 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 I think, I think Ken Ward at that time was, uh, had some kind of position with, with you people, uh, with, with the organization. I, I forget what it was. It's a few years back. All the way back to Leadership Class Thirty, I think it was, uh, that I was in when I saw that. But very impressive work that you do. It's, it's, it's an organization that is as needed in the community as Leadership Montgomery, Leadership Alabama, and, uh, uh, the, uh, forty-year-olds, uh, what you call it, the Leadership Program that the Chamber puts on for, for the young, young, uh, people. So, uh, I'm supportive of it, uh, of helping you in the way we can.
Thank you.
Jenny, I had asked that you all come and I had not heard from you senior in a while. I know we were in Leadership Montgomery, Class Number Eighteen together.
I was like, team together.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know that you all do a great job. I just had not heard from the organization in about two years and I was just concerned about just what you all were doing, uh, during the interim. But it's good to see that you all are back, not that you're ever winning it where, uh, and that you're doing a great job.
Well, it was a trying year during the pandemic, but it's, it's gotten, we're back to normal. So, everything is running strong and we would appreciate any help that you all could do.
Thank y'all for coming today and for giving the update. Uh, my, my, my dear friend Pamela Ryan is on your board and she reached out to me just as a board member and as to her friend, she's really doing a good job. I've immoded her some money for your next fundraiser or whatever event. Uh, but, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I support, uh, Mr. Singleton's, uh, motion to help Bridge Builders.
Yeah, I believe we, correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl or Jenny, but in the past we gave five thousand, last year, is that correct?
Yes.
And you recommended ten thousand?
I recommended ten this year. It's not the twenty-five they're asking for, but I do want to support them.
Do we have any money left?
Also, um, have an open door so we can come back every year and, and update you on our progress and what's happened with the students who have graduated.
What's the average class size?
Yeah. Um, so, we, uh, we recruit in person. So, I go to each public, private, home schools and I actually recruit in person and we accept up to a hundred juniors, upcoming juniors, and up to a hundred upcoming seniors. So, the max is a hundred. We probably average around ninety.
Oh.
Yes, sir. Ninety for juniors and ninety for seniors. And they go through a week-long conference in the summer each. And we have a training week for the, um, people that we train to help us put on the conference. The juniors go through a week, the seniors go through a week, and then the rest of the school year consists of them getting back to the community through community service hours.
Okay. Now, I, I don't know how urgent this is, uh, uh, the, the need for the twenty-five thousand. I'm, I'm leaning toward twenty-five thousand. Before disclosure now, Jenny's husband and I were in, uh, Leadership Alabama Class Twenty-five. And, uh, but, uh.
I was class eighteen.
Yeah.
In two things.
And it, um, we, we, we get designated replenished the first of the year. Can, 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 uh, if we put it off till the first of the year and made the twenty-five thousand, would that work?
That'd be awesome. Thank you. And I do want to mention.
Wait a minute, Jenny.
Don't count.
I'm just kind of throwing this out. I'm just kind of throwing this out to the group. You got, you got ten down on this end. I want to, I want to do the twenty-five.
Hey, there's more juniors missing in the.
Mr. Chairman, I would be, I would be willing to do fifteen thousand from the collective than if any individual commissioner wanted to give. We certainly have appropriations that we could individually give.
I'm in favor. If you can wait to January the first, I'm in favor of the twenty-five.
Absolutely.
But I would like to see a budget jump and send it.
Sure.
I'd like to share that.
One more for the twenty-five.
None of the Ives were in the Leadership Montgomery Class.
With me, but I know both.
But I, I did hear someone mention about the Legacy Museum and you and I saw each other there. And, and we have incorporated with the previous two, uh, uh, EJI, uh, museums and the memorial in our last year's program. But this year, we will have the Legacy Museum and it's very, very important that we take these young people through there and then we have a, a very deep debriefing afterwards. So, I think that this year is going to be really even better than the past. So, thank you all.
Jenny, I don't know if I'm going to vote in favor of that because you mentioned you knew everybody but me.
Oh, she didn't say she knew me.
We were in Leadership Alabama.
Okay, so, we were in Leadership Alabama together and cried together on the. Okay, thank you all. Thank you so much.
It, it looks like you have the support for the twenty-five, so, thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you.
And several more items to consider on our agenda.
Ready or should I wait?
Yes, sir. It's all yours.
Oh, okay. Thank the Commission for letting me make the presentation today. I've brought the packages with additional information. Uh, I'm Martin McCaffrey. I'm the Director of the Capri Theater and I'm here to request support for our Marquee Magic Campaign. The Capri Theater is the longest continually operating movie theater in Montgomery and probably in the state. It was opened in July of nineteen forty-one as the Clover Theater. At that time, it was considered to be far out of town, a second-run house for movies that played downtown at theaters like The Empire and The Paramount. It was remodeled and renamed the Capri Theater in December of nineteen sixty-two, which was when the current marquee was installed. The Capri Community Film Society Incorporated, a nonprofit organization, took over the operation of the Capri Theater in the fall of nineteen eighty-three and has operated it since. In two thousand and ten, the Film Society purchased the building and thanks to Capri supporters, we were able to pay off the loan in three years. In two thousand and sixteen, we did a major remodel and upgrade of the building. We raised enough money to meet our original budget, but the need to abate asbestos and install a new HVAC system ran up the cost. When the inside of the theater was remodeled, rewired, and replumbed, we turned to the exterior of the building. In October two thousand and nineteen, we started the Marquee Magic Campaign to replace the badly worn-out marquee with a new one, more in the style of the original Clover Capri Building. Uh, we also wanted to restart, retire our construction debt from two thousand and sixteen. We had a campaign goal of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would cover the marquee and the front of the theater and pay down the debt. Amount of contributions to date is five hundred and thirty-six thousand. That's seventy-two percent. That's contribution and pledges, of which we've received three hundred and eighty-one thousand. COVID, however, did slow us down considerably. We have not stopped. We have gone through the architectural drawings and plans and, uh, we are currently, um, searching for, not searching for, we're working with WK Up Church to, uh, possibly be the contractor on it. As you may know, contracting and the cost of buildings has skyrocketed, uh, since COVID and being able to, um, get anybody set up, even just to get a contractor is difficult and that has really put us off and stalled us. Replacing the, and redesign of the marquee will not only improve the theater, uh, from the outside, it will also upgrade the look of the neighborhood, which if you've been over in Cloverdale lately, some work needs to be done. We have procured ten thousand dollars from the Montgomery City Council and have a request in for some more. We are hoping the Commission will be able to match, match that ten thousand dollars. The Capri serves not only Cloverdale, but the city, the county of Montgomery, and has long been a resource to other independent theaters in the state of Alabama. I'd like to thank you for your consideration and if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This, the Capri Theater is in the heart of, uh, my district and is in the heart of the city of Montgomery. It's in the heart of one of the oldest neighborhoods in the city and it's invaluable, uh, in terms of, uh, history and, uh, people coming to Montgomery from out of town and wanting, uh, to experience, uh, uh, these, these, I call them oldies, but, uh, there are all kinds of festivals that take place over at, uh, the Capri Theater. I've supported them since I have been elected and I've, uh, participated in some of the festivals, the Black Film Festival that they hold, uh, is it, but in the spring.
Uh, the Black Film Festival is usually the last week in August. It's put on by ASU. It's the first week.
I've attended that a couple, a couple of years and a, a few other, uh, uh, exclusive screenings that you had over there that I've attended. An excellent place. You've done an excellent job in the remodeling.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
Fully supportive and hope, I hope that my fellow Commissioners will join me in supporting this, this effort.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just want to thank your board for the work that you all have done in terms of renovating the theater. I had a couple of guests from New York the other night, and we actually attended the four films, short films on the Alabama River Alliance, that the project that they were working on along with Southern Exposure. And they were very impressed. Actually, I, they gave it some really raving reviews, the films and the theater itself. And so because of my opportunity to expose them to that, we have got an open door policy with them to come to New York anytime we get ready. So I think that you all are fast becoming a tourist attraction, and I'm happy to see that you all are opening and that you all are working with different entities to provide exposure for the various documentaries and other things that you all do.
Yeah, well, thank you. And yes, we do a lot of various, we have a variety of programming that we do. We have our regular programming. We have the festivals, the rentals. We had a concert this weekend. Once COVID's over with, we'll start up again with the children's matinees in the summer. But, you know, right now, can't have 300 kids all jammed in a room together. But the, since, since we took it over in 83, we have, we're diligently to have films for the whole community, and we want to continue doing that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We've got several items to, to cover on the rest of the information session. As I said, item number six, Commissioner Walker has nominated Paul Hutchison to be a board member of the Public Building Authority. His resume is at your place.
Next agenda.
Item number four, the two members of the Board of the Montgomery County Board of Human Resources, their terms have expired, and they have, would like to be reappointed.
No issue for me.
What are their names?
Owen Thompson and Frank Jenkins.
Okay.
I don't know either one of them.
Frank Jenkins is the CPA.
I know Frank.
Yeah, we know Frank. Okay. Next agenda.
Item number six is to consider a resolution authorizing the county's Thanksgiving holiday observance on Friday, November 26.
Next agenda.
Item number seven, it, I mean, I've gotten off of. Item number seven is a resolution regarding Gatsby 54 fund balance commitment.
Next agenda.
Item number eight is a budget change request number two for the County Commission. This budget change will fund the reimbursement of the Judge of Probate Fund for expenses incurred that were intended to be submitted for CARES Act reimbursement, but when the deadline passed, it could not be.
I thought this was going to be taken from another source of funding, COVID relief or something, or when it passed the CARES, when there's something else?
Well, it will be submitted, what will be, what is eligible will be submitted on the FEMA claim.
That's what I was thinking. How much of it is eligible?
We don't know yet.
Yeah. I wanted to go on and get, get this out of the way. I assigned Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Harris to work with Florence and Cheryl and Kimla to rectify this. And I said, whatever they decide, we'll, we'll go along with it. So I think this is what they decided. So we need to move on from a wait for mixed stuff.
Next agenda.
Next agenda. Item number nine is to consider funding a study with the city by Skipper Consulting to develop a transportation plan for the I-65 interchange through Maxwell Boulevard to Highway 31. Attached is a letter submitted from Maxwell requesting a plan, and this proposal is an opportunity to develop that plan. The proposal is between 20, 250 and 350,000 dollars with the cost to be shared between the city and the county.
You, what, where did this come from? I mean.
It was a, a letter, the letters attached that we received last week, I believe, requesting this plan.
But I mean, I know, but in order to, to get this far, it had to be some discussions and anybody on the commission participated in this?
This is, I, I'm familiar with, with this and, and fully supportive. Is this, is this an ARP opportunity?
No.
It's definitely not?
Well, oh, I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, this is just being presented to us as information. We all need to, to take time and, and read over this and ask all the questions we need. I think it's imperative as, as we are beginning to shift focus in a new way to that 65 corridor. We're losing so many opportunities. When people travel 65 between Birmingham and Mobile, you know, my vision is that we, we hit all of those major ingress and egress points on 65 into Montgomery and change the look of it. But kind of backing off from that, you know, we're about to build a substantial recreational development that is going to draw people from all over the southeast, if not all over the country. And, and we need to take a look at that interchange. I think this is, this is imperative. I think, you know, and I'm not saying we, the commission, but we as a community, as leaders, would be irresponsible not to. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about this. I want us to all get comfortable with it, look over it, ask questions. This is just being presented as information right now.
I'm sorry. It really should have been a general information item, not a next agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we've definitely got more information coming to us. Nobody's asking for action right now, correct? Right. Because this is fresh to some. I'm, I've been excited about it for a while. But, yeah, we'll have somebody come, I'm sure, and present details of this plan. So.
Kimla, you want to speak on this?
Yes, sir.
We still have to see where it came from.
I believe the chamber is spearheading this in, in coordination with the city, the county, the Max, Maxwell. You know, the chamber is often the hub when it comes to bringing, bringing the various leadership groups together.
Yes. So we, there was the initial traffic study done in cooperation with the Whitewater District, and that called for, you know, two ways to get in, you know, one, you know, both right, right in and right out with the traffic light. And from my, our discussions, Maxwell has come and asked for an additional study in terms of what is going to be possible and what is going to be necessary, not just with the Whitewater District, but what's going to occur across the street and how that is going to affect traffic. As we stated, currently, as Maxwell sits, it can accommodate all traffic that would even come with the additional traffic with the Whitewater District. But Maxwell is saying there's going to be a lot more. That's their prediction. That's honestly what would make them happy, because that brings more people to their facilities and to be able to look and see what's available in Maxwell as well as what's available in, in Montgomery. So that's what Maxwell has kind of come to us and come to the city in cooperation with Skipper to ask us to further look at what else is possible in terms of the network, in terms of what can be done at the bridge, what can be done on some 65 exits, what's on the other side in terms of Maxwell making reconsider opening, reopening their Day Street entrance. So there are a lot of things that are in, kind of inside of this that are, yes, transportation related primarily, but it's also about development, and it's also about what could come with this boom that should come with the Whitewater District.
And, and can, this is a, this is a study that needs to be done so that we can begin to prepare this infrastructure. And again, when I say we, I mean all the leadership in all of Montgomery County. So we can plan to prepare. You know, this, this gets us shovel-ready to get these projects done. But then we're going to be able to go federal, state, our local partners to actually fund the project. But it's, in my estimation, it's, it's imperative that we make some infrastructure changes as we continue to grow downtown.
Well, and I don't have no problem with it. But the problem I do have is that when, when you talk about the city and the county, and initiated it from the, from the chamber, and we don't know anything about it, we get a letter requesting this. You all go spearhead something, I think you all let us know so we won't be caught like we caught Day.
I think this is them letting us know, though, right? And, and I'm sure you're going to come and speak to us about it.
This isn't, this isn't the way to let, let us know in a formal meeting like this.
Not the way. What happened then?
All three of y'all do. They can't do anything right if they don't come. You're frustrated. Yeah. I don't appreciate that. But if they don't come and talk to us, you beat them up. If they do come and bring something, they don't even want to show us the point of this.
You say the wing commander sent what?
That's who this letter is from.
Each one of the commissioners had one?
No.
It was in their packet. It was addressed to you.
So Anna, you'll come back and speak with us a little later?
On 19 October. On 19 October, the letter was sent.
Ms. Jim, I'd have a letter for Mr. Anderson. I was just curious. You have a lot of experience with Metropolitan Planning Organization in terms of projects similar to this, perhaps?
Yes, sir.
Is this something that the MPO could fund? And who is Skipper Consulting?
Skipper Consulting is a consulting firm here and in Birmingham. Skipper Consulting has done a lot of work for the, for ALDOT throughout the years. As a relate, I know for one big project that they are currently working on and have done in phases is the changes to the Boulevard where you can kind of, you know, when they're changing the, the medians, kind of improving that, changing the lights. They've been working on that for some time. Probably one of the biggest deals was at 85, 85 and Eastern Boulevard. That's something that, that's been in the works for years. Just to give you a kind of an idea of the level of work that Skipper does. So Skipper is, is the consulting firm, and they're very highly regarded, very well trusted. In terms of the MPO, it's really going to be dependent on what comes out of this in terms of roadway recommendation. I don't think the MPO would be able to afford it, but this is something that the state may be able to take on. And the MPO may be able to make some changes, some roadway changes, some signal improvements, some signal addition. But we would really have to need to wait and see what comes out of the study and what those recommendations are. Because-
I was just curious why the MPO could not do the study. I think y'all have done a lot of those things. Have you, have the MPO ever used Skipper?
Well, yes, we have used Skipper, but this is something that really needs to, it would have to, I mean, whether it comes from the MPO or the city and the county, it would, it would still will end up with Skipper anyway, because they have a level of familiarity, one, with this project, and two, with large-scale adjustments like this. I think some of the things, like I said, in terms of financing, the, the actual roadways, construction, those are going to be things we're going to need to look at, because bridges and the interstate, those are going to be some lengthy discussions that are going to have to be had with first the Federal Highway Administration and then further with ALDOT to see exactly how can we get this done, when, where, how much is it going to cost. It's probably going to be, probably the biggest question that's going to be come out of this study.
We're glad you bring that experience to this body, because I appreciate that.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the need for this. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Walker. It's definitely needed. But my, my, my issue is the same as the chairman's. If you're going, if you're going to ask us to pay for it, then you need to let us know what's going on and have, have, give us a seat at the table. That's, that's all I'm saying. Don't, don't do a done deal and come in here and say, "Look, this is your share."
Just, I, I'm not trying to be obtuse. I, I don't think we're being told this is our share. This is a, just informational. How would, you know, we received a, you know, Mintzer sent a letter, Colonel Mintzer sent a letter on October, and then we were presented with some information today, which maybe was premature. Would you have preferred to receive this, you know, a phone call about it or an email about it?
The way it was presented, it was, this is a city and the county, a city and a county project. And my question is, you know, so Skipper had to be hired. Who hired Skipper?
This is just a proposal from Skipper.
Well, who asked Skipper for the proposal? Was anybody from the county there?
Well, it looks like all of this originated from the Department of the Air Force. We received a letter from Colonel Mintzer making this request. I'm just, I'm, I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to be obtuse. I just want to know if this, if this was a frustrating way to receive information, what is your preference?
My preference would have been to at least have somebody from the commission onboard when, when, when Skipper was engaged. I mean, we're all, we're all in agreement that this is, this is something that needs to be done. But at the bottom, at the end of the day, even if we get federal money, whatever match has come is going to be coming out of our pockets.
Yes, sir. This, I, I do apologize. This is not, we haven't had y'all around the table yet, and so I'm surprised to see this as well. Honestly, the base should have sent this directly to the chamber to coordinate. We're gathering information right now. There is no contract with Skipper. There's conversations happening about how to go about transforming the access to downtown and the base. Much of this started, one, based on the demands we believe that Whitewater will place on our infrastructure, and also the downtown plan that's in process right now that the Chamber Foundation is funding about how do we grow our downtown as a tourism entity, a small business development, a military place, and also to fuel the Whitewater development. So this is not really ready. I think this is situational awareness, because the wing, to show you the wing commander is concerned. And so Colonel Mintzer is concerned about access to the base.
We are concerned.
Yes, sir.
I understand all that part, believe me. I, I do. But too often, it's way past here. It's ready. We, 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 you got to vote on this. You want, this is, we, your share is this. And I'm saying, well, who was there when that, and nobody here, everybody look at each other. Nobody know anything about it.
There, there is-
I mean, but this, maybe not this, we're not there on this project. But that's, that was my concern.
Yes, sir. And I understand that. I don't blame you.
And the way it was presented, it was said, this is the city, a, a project for the city and the county.
We don't even know who we will be trying to ask for the funding, and we don't have a firm scope of work or a contract proposal from Skipper. So that number is a big range number that really isn't even ready to be looked at. That's an approximate number. We're trying to get all this-
But Anna, somebody had to put this letter together and come up with these figures. And oftentimes, I'd be the one to be around the table with you and tell you, "We need to bring it to the commission."
Yes, sir.
That did not, that wasn't the process.
It has, you're right, sir.
Because we got a letter saying that it's ready, and this is how much we want you to pay.
Yeah. And that is-
If I got a problem with that.
Yes, sir.
Of us being concerned about that, hey, too bad.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll take some blame. I have known about this, so maybe it's my fault that I wasn't more communicative with my colleagues. And this has also been discussed very generally at our ARP meetings, the need for this infrastructure and specifically the 65 corridor. So, you know, maybe I should have been more aggressive to make sure that y'all were up to speed on it.
Well, Commissioner Walker is, is correct. This has been, this is really about looking at Montgomery County's future to, to have planning documents that are at the ready to request federal dollars. And so this is just not put together yet as it should be. You will be around the table to look at this and determine how you want to put this together. Right now, it's just an opportunity, and the base is concerned. So we're trying to address it, and we will bring it to you.
I'm not going to say that. We're going to move on. I feel disrespected as a chairman because I'm the one who knew the no stuff first and then assigned certain people. and then assign certain people, okay? And I won't sit here and be disrespected.
Yes, sir, I'm very sorry about that, miscommunication.
All right, let's move on.
The final item is to consider a sponsorship for AUM's Business Breakfast Series. We've done this in the past for the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. We can... And those, that's all our items. And can we take just a short break to allow them to switch to the formal?